Tuesday, January 15th, 2013. We'll go ahead and start with an invocation from Chuck from Discover Community Church. If you all arise.
Mayor, City Council, let's go to God in prayer. Father God, we just come together tonight and we just ask your blessing upon this time together and this meeting. We put ourselves into your hands, Father God. Hands of a loving, caring God, help us do the work you've called us to do to make this community the great community you've called it to be. We will pray all this, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Move to the roll call, please.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here. Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year. We've had a month off from a council standpoint, so I hope you had a good holiday season. We're going to get back into the swing of things. We have a lot to accomplish this year. And starting that, we'll move on to the agenda, item 3.1. At this time, we have a proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. I wanted to turn that time over to Councilman Brown. I do. There you are.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, before I read this proclamation, I'd just like to say that I'm delighted that Maricopa is honoring Dr. King's birthday proclamation. Last spring, I had mentioned the fact that City Mayor of Maricopa was saying, "The mayor of the Northside School District did not recognize Dr. King's portrait, nor did it recognize Black History Month." And very remiss of not joining other cities in the valley in not doing so. As a result of that, discussed with the city manager, she was able to breathe, and sitting with my colleagues, we have part of King's creed named. So other cities, of course, have honored Dr. King all week, rectory ceremonies, ceremonies, you name it. But we better start. And I'm pleased to read this proclamation.
Proclamation, City of Maricopa, proud history and prosperous future. Mayor Christian Price. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on this day, which is this day, January 15th, in 1929, and spent his life dedicated to promoting justice, peace, and freedom for all. And whereas Dr. King worked tirelessly for equality for all people from all walks of life and backgrounds, and did so by using nonviolent means and showing compassion. And whereas Dr. King made a lasting impression as a key leader in the civil rights movement during the 1950s and 60s. And whereas Dr. King dreamed of a time when all children could play together and live together and work side by side for the betterment of our country. And whereas the city of Maricopa has named a roadway at the new multi-generation center and regional park as an embodiment of that same dream. In doing so, the estate of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard will be gathering place for all members of our community to enjoy, providing that sense of togetherness or unity that Dr. King works so diligently to achieve. Now therefore, I, Mayor Christian Price, hereby proclaim today as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Maricopa and encourage all residents to continue to work toward the values he strived for, dated 15th January to 2013.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and leave that with Councilmember Brown. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may add, February is Black History Month, and we are holding a celebration at our next city council meeting in honor of that, much like we did for Hispanic Heritage Month as well.
Excellent. So if you're looking for a little bit of fun, be here at the next council meeting. You think this one's fun. The next one's really going to be fun. So thank you very much, and thank you, Councilmember Brown. We look forward to honoring all those that have served in so many different ways. At this time, we're going to move to item four, the report from the mayor. We're going to do this a little bit differently at this time in the fact that I'm going to turn some time first over to Councilwoman Gussi. She has an award to present.
Thank you. We have an American Legion Auxiliary Unit here in the city of Maricopa. The American Legion Auxiliary consists of women veterans and the wives, mothers, daughters, and granddaughters of veterans. I'm the current president of the auxiliary, and at this time, I'd like to call our past president, Ms. Patty LaCombe up. We have a presentation to give an award to a young lady who's received the American Legion Auxiliary Arizona Department Good Deeds Awards. We submitted this award, and Ms. Michelle Potter received that state award. We'd like to present her with that award right now. You have mine coming up.
It says here, "Recognition of the Good Deeds for Community Service and the Commanutary Contributions: Celebrating Service, Not Self," to Michelle Potter.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. Congratulations. This time, I'd also like to ask Debbie Cadu, who's the president of the Altera HOA, and Brian Killen, who's a community manager at AAM, to come forward, please. They also have a presentation for a community volunteer.
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell, and City Council, my name is Debbie Cadu. I am the president of the Altera HOA. Tonight, I would like to thank Joy Ashley Gibbs for all the hard work and dedication she provides our communities and businesses in the city of Maricopa. Joy Ashley is a volunteer, Maricopa Police Department Prevention Specialist, and has attended many of our HOA meetings and our social events. During these visits, she has shared her knowledge and tools with our members in an effort to help us provide a safe environment and protection for our families. Her knowledge and enthusiasm has sparked interest in both the block watch programs and the effort to have neighbors meet their neighbors through block parties and social events. Excuse me. It's that time of the year. All to help keep us safe and less likely to become a victim of crime. Her countless hours of volunteerism, along with her dedication and enthusiasm, has truly made her a neighborhood hero.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Brian Killen. As the mayor said, I'm a community manager for AAM here in Maricopa. Being a community manager is not an easy occupation. Having someone like Joy Ashley Gibbs to go to makes our jobs much easier. She helps us by providing information to our communities. She attends several of our HOA meetings to discuss block watch, coffee with the chief, and gain events and similar events throughout the city of Maricopa. She sends us helpful tips on crime prevention that we share with our community members to make our communities safer as a whole. All managers that I've spoken with, both past and present here in Maricopa, have talked that we really do rely on Joy a little bit too much for some of the stuff we do, but we all know that we probably couldn't provide half the information we can on safety and security to our communities without her. We at AAM would like to present Joy Ashley Gibbs with the Maricopa Neighborhood Hero Award for all of her hard work and dedication to the betterment of Maricopa.
Thank you. Thank you, Joy, for all that you do. Appreciate it. With that, I'd like to thank you all for participating this evening in those particular events. Real quick, a couple of things here. Wanted to announce that we have a first zoning code update public open house coming. The city is excited to announce the first comprehensive zoning code rewrite, and that it has already begun. Residents, business owners, and stakeholders within Maricopa are encouraged to help shape the future of our community by providing input and participating throughout this year-long process. The first open house workshop will be held on January 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Southern Dunes. So again, that's January 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Southern Dunes. The purpose of this initial workshop is to obtain input from community members on zoning issues to be addressed during the zoning code update. So if you have questions on the open house, please contact Dana Burkhart, who is our interim zoning administrator. You can contact him via email at dana.burkhart, that's B-U-R-K-H-A-R-D-T, at maricopa-az.gov. Or you can reach him via phone at 520-316-6983. So again, this is really important. We're going to talk a little bit further about this today on the agenda perhaps, but wanted to keep you all apprised that this is a really important thing to rewrite the zoning code. And then finally, many of you understand and know and had the opportunity to participate. We had a wonderful groundbreaking ceremony for the multi-generational Aquatic Center and Regional Park that's located at 347 and Bowen Road. We were able to do this on this past Saturday. It's 140 acres of up and coming fund, so we look forward to seeing you all present in the near future to participate in the many activities that are coming down the pike with that. So with that, I'll turn the time over to the city manager for the report from her, as well as economic development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. It's my pleasure to invite Latricia Woods, our Public Information Officer, up to the podium to present to you and the community with our 10-year anniversary logo.
Cool.
Honorable Mayor Price, members of the councils, City Manager Fisher, Assistant City Manager Casey, if you were there Saturday, you heard that we have coined Mayor Price our decennial mayor, as we are celebrating our 10th anniversary as an incorporated municipality this year. So without further ado, I would like to unveil what you will see on all of our publications this year as we celebrate this momentous occasion. Our 10th anniversary logo. If I can work this thing. Okay. We wanted a design that supported the city's branding. You know, our logo is very important to us. It's trademarked, and it sets our tone for our community. So we thought this complemented our logo extremely well, so you will see it side by side, the city logo. You also see it side by side, the city symbol, the M symbol. And so again, you'll see it on our publications, our flyers, our programs, as we celebrate this year and move up to our big day in October and our new city complex. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Did Ruben do the design?
No, he did not. He provided input to a graphic designer who was the designer of our original brand. And so we used that design company because they were familiar with our logo and our branding guidelines, and were very instrumental in creating that when the city first took on that task. And so we, with Ruben's support, and the city manager and assistant city manager gave them kind of what we were looking for in a concept, and we were very happy with the results that they gave us.
That's very nice.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Thank you very much. Excited.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. I also would like to invite up Economic Development Specialist Jaclyn Aaron's Cook, who's going to do our shop local presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As many people know, local businesses support our city in many ways, including providing jobs for our residents and generating revenue for local services. Last April, the city launched a shop local program to raise awareness of local business offerings, encourage residents to shop local, and reward loyal Maricopa shoppers. Any shoppers and businesses that wish to participate or get more information on the program can do that on the city's website, and I encourage everyone to check it out. It's a good deal. So over the past nine months, the program has been running, and we've awarded $1,350 in gift certificates. And now, we're ready to pick the first winner of 2013. And I have a few names here. So congratulations goes to Frida Serapo.
Frida Serapo.
And just as a reminder, the Economic Development Department is here to help anybody who's looking to start, grow, or even maintain a business within Maricopa. We also administer programs such as the shop local and business beat programs. So feel free to contact us, or me, for any business assistance needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. I failed to mention that our city magistrate, Judge Solly, is here. So Judge, thank you very much for being here tonight. With that, we'll move on to item six, called the public. At this time, the podium is yours to approach, and given about five minutes in which you can talk to your council. Typically, a council doesn't respond in these times, but it allows you to tell what's on your mind, and we'd like to listen to it. So please, I'll go ahead and start with Mark. Mark, state your name here.
Mark Montgomery here. Citizen of Maricopa, been citizen for about three years. And my wife, Carrie, and I have been selling homes in Maricopa since 2007, full-time. Okay, so we know the travails that this city, the economy has gone through. You know, with just the recession, we've seen how Maricopa has grown, come down, been growing again. And we're going to continue to grow, I believe, because we have a great councilship here. I really admire it. I'm watching it. I'm watching it grow. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate your public service. I really want you to know that, okay? And I'm not here to talk about myself. I will mention homebargainplanet.com to anyone who's looking for a house to buy or sell, okay? And I'm also, we also have this great new site called HeyMaricopaTV.com. And what that's all about is promoting the awesomeness of Maricopa, the city, not the county, okay? We're about promoting Maricopa, its businesses, getting the word out there about our community, giving us street cred, and just making this an awesome city. Now, I'm not here to talk about myself, although I could, I have a 20-minute speech prepared, but I'm not going to do that to you. How much time I got? I got 3:35. Okay, we're counting. Now, I'm here to champion a cause. I'm here to challenge the notion of, what is that, charity starts at home? We all say that. We all give our money overseas, and we complain about it. We have to fund organizations. We've got to make sure these funding organizations are real and correct before we give our money, right? That's what happens a lot. We're jaded. We don't know where our money's going to. Is Bono taking our money? Is he spending all our money? We don't know. I have someone right here. Her name's Melanie Rogers, and she has this, it's not a disease, it's a heart condition. And I don't know if any of you heard of it. It's called syncope, right? Recurrent syncope. I have no idea what that means. All I know is, she's a single mother, she has two children, and occasionally, for no reason at all, she'll fall over and hurt her head, hurt her back. She suffered, what, how many concussions?
Three.
Three, three concussions. And her kids, I don't know all the details. It's a tough story. They have to watch this. And she recently got fired from her job about a week ago. So I want to champion this cause. She lives at the villages at Rancho El Dorado. I want you to know her, and I want our community, our people. And that's what we had the invocation about. It was about, sorry, what's the dog's name?
Archer.
Archer?
Yeah.
The invocation said, "The desire to make this a great community." And all I hear is the word unity in there. I hear commune in there. I hear love. And so that's what I want to challenge everybody with today. You could go to HeyMaricopaTV.com, watch some of my goofy videos. There's real estate on there. We're promoting businesses the best way we know how. We have children interviewing adults. I have my seven-year-old son, Brandon, interviewing, you know, ATA karate school. Give my son some confidence in other children as well. You go there, you can watch her video, featured video about her story. And I will now be quiet and allow you to explain what this is.
Thank you.
Okay. So about a year ago, I was diagnosed with recurrent syncope, and I was sent over to a cardiologist for testing. There really isn't no cure for it. You can be put on medications. Unfortunately, my body rejects the medications. So I was told back in July I'd need a service dog. I wasn't really accepting of my condition, so it was something that I really wanted, and thought, oh, it's just another mouth defeat. I've got two kids. Well, push comes to shove, and I don't have much of a choice, because the service dog's going to save my life and protect my kids. So for me, the cost of the service dog and having to feed another mouth was no longer important. It was being here for my kids. So what happens is, is when you suffer from a syncope episode, your heart rate is supposed to come back up. Syncope means it's a sudden drop in blood pressure. Unfortunately, my heart doesn't speed back up to pump the blood to the brain to get all the functioning organs to work the way they're supposed to work. So it kind of sends you into like a non-convulsive seizure. So my kids aren't big enough to help me. They're three and five, so the dog will be able to essentially get me the medical help I need. Once I have an episode, it will hit a medical alert button, which will alert medical personnel to come to the house, and it's tracked through my phone, so it'll send a GPS location to police department or fire department, whoever, to let them know where I'm at. He have all my medications in his bag if I'm out in public. He'll have little information packet on what to give me if I have an episode. He can retrieve things. He can open doors. He can keep my kids safe if they need to, so they don't go run out in the middle of the road. But mostly, it's a confidence thing. So it's hard to go out in public with my condition without somebody else. So in the event that I fall, he'll be there with me, or not necessarily Archer. Archer's not placed with me. But I'm working with Arizona Goldens to raise the funds to get my service dog. So the only way I know how is to get the word out there, and there's a lot of conditions that people don't know about, and mine happens to be one of them, and there are organizations that help other people with different heart conditions. Unfortunately, mine isn't one of them. There's only about 1% of the population in America that suffer from recurrent syncope in my condition. So it's about getting the word out there. So appreciate your time.
Melanie, can I ask you one question?
Sure thing.
What is the goal that you're shooting for?
I've currently raised about $5,000, and I need $18,000 total.
For the service dog. Okay. Thank you. You have a question? Councilman?
Please, you said, and Mark said, that your body will not tolerate medication?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
What is the nature of your treatments?
I just keep taking the medication. That's all I can really do. There, I'm going to go see a doctor. His name is Dr. Goodman. He's at the Mayo Clinic, and they're thinking about putting a shunt in my chest, which I'll be able to give myself IV fluids every two days with a medication, and that way, my body gets the medication faster. But the chances of it actually working are, it's still like in research, so there's no guarantee that it'll work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I know that Paul is talking to Mark right now, but there's a variety of resources that we feel we could help start to network you with, so we appreciate you coming up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's impossible to follow, so our best wishes to you. My name is Keith Kirkman. I'm with Orbitel Communications, and tonight, I'm here to introduce you to the new president and general manager for Orbitel Communications. John Scherz joined our organization a week ago Monday on the 7th, and he replaces me in that responsibility, and I will be leaving Arizona Cable Operations and the state of Arizona at the end of March and joining Tracy and my youngest son at our home in Minneapolis and leaving altogether. It's with heavy heart, but also with a high degree of optimism about the future. I think it was either late August or early September that I attended my first city council meeting in 2005 and have enjoyed being here for seven and a half years, observing the council, working in our community. I think I might write a book, Maricopa City Council from the peanut section, maybe. But it's been a real pleasure working with every one of you, all of your predecessors. It's been a joy to not only work professionally with you all, but to build a close personal friendship with each one of you and all that have served before you. I look at the future of Maricopa with great and high aspirations and hope. John is a member of the fifth generation of the Scherz family, 140-year-old family-owned business that acquired Orbitel Communications and Western Broadband last year, and have been working combining those businesses and those assets. And their investment in this community and John's presence here represents what the future of Orbitel Communications in the city of Maricopa is all about. So I don't want to take any more time. I want to let John introduce himself and talk a little bit about the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members and city officials, I've already met with several of you, and I want to thank you very much for making me feel so welcome. I truly appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Keith, not only for his leadership of Orbitel, but in the community, and strengthening the relationship between Maricopa and Orbitel. I've learned a lot from him in the last few days and look forward to learning even more in the next few months. So Keith, thank you very much. As Keith mentioned, Scherz Communications, over 140 years old. I'm a fifth-generation member of the business, and we truly believe in, we even state in our vision statement, that we give back to the communities in which we operate because it's the right thing to do. We also like to empower the local properties. It's not necessarily from the top down. Nobody knows the community better than the local operations, and so we want to make sure that we not only meet, but exceed the needs of our customers, that we operate honestly and fairly, and that we grow through innovation and acquisition. And not only did Scherz acquire Orbitel, but we also purchased Western Broadband, which operates in Saddle Brook, Sun Lakes, Ropes and Ranch, and Sunbird. And that allowed us to double our customer service support team, which will enhance our customer service of the area. But Keith and the team have done such an amazing job, and with the Orbitel brand, we're actually expanding that brand over the Western Broadband group. And we also intend to invest about $2 million in capital to expand our services that we offer, which will include video on demand. So I know that's a big part of our plans coming up. We hope to do that within the early second quarter. But that's really Scherz Communications in a snapshot. If you ever have any questions for me, please let me know, but I very much look forward to working with all of you and greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keith's been a huge part of our community, so we really thank him for all he's done. We look forward to you stepping into those shoes, John. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Where's the other? Oh, there she is. She's helping. Hi, I'm Cynthia Portree, and I'm one of your local artisans here in Maricopa, and this is Michelle Fredericks, who is also an artisan, and Bonnie de Toro del Turco, who is also an artisan. We're here to share with everyone a fine event that we have planned at the Dupe, March 16th. It's going to be called Art on the Veranda. Okay, we have 38 artisans, vendors that will be attending, and 30 We have 38 artisans, vendors that will be attending, and 31 are local people. So that shows you what talent we have in this community. Okay? So it's going to be March 16th, from 11 to 5. We're going to have a, uh, ribbon care, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony, and then the Duke will be providing, uh, their restaurant and their grill. We do have artisans coming from other areas, and that's our goal, actually, and that's why we're here, to get help from the community, from the council, to bring our customers to Maricopa to help with prosperous future, as you have on your sign. So mark it on your calendar, March 16th. We have painters, uh, fiber work, artwork, uh, photographers, jewelry, gourd work, mixed medias, uh, pencil, fused glass, quilling, and a potter. So put it down on your calendar, March 16th, 11 to 5. Okay? Michelle, did you have anything to say?
No.
Bonnie's passing out our flyer, so we do have a website, but I don't believe it's up yet. So put, spread the word, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate it. Does anybody else like to approach the podium at this time? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public and move on to the agenda items, and we'll move on to 7.1 and 7.2 as approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Onto section 8, 8.1. The mayor and the city council shall hold a public hearing as required by ARS 9-471, uh, parentheses L for case number zoning 12-03. A proposed change in zoning classification from county to municipal zoning for all properties within the recently completed annexation 11-01, as approved by the city council with ordinance 12-06. So at this time, the public hearing is open. If you wish to approach the podium and speak to this item and this item only, may do so. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 8.1. Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, items nine through 9.6. Uh, council, can I have a motion to approve consent? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but it was revised. Right. So I believe I printed off the revised one today. I think it's nine to, 9-1 to 9-6. So may I have a motion to approve, please? Have a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto the regular agenda. Items 10, 10.1. This is a resolution. The mayor and city council shall authorize and direct an acquisition of all property necessary for the completion of the widening of Honeycut Road within the city limits of Maricopa by dedication, donation, purchase, exchange, or under the power of eminent domain as a matter of public necessity. This is for discussion and action. Danielle.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I am simply here to answer any questions, as is Dennis, our, uh, city attorney. Essentially, this is a declaration that, um, helps the city move forward and gives the staff the ability to move forward in making this project happen, so.
Okay. Council? Uh, yes.
Members of council, we understand that you've drawn the attorney representatives to say that both landowners aren't contesting the public necessities, so we can have a point of view. Spoiltly, the other issue would be the price.
Okay. Something that we are currently working on, I would assume, in negotiations.
Correct. Again, and, and this, this project that we're referencing, um, and again, this resolution would be declaring it a public necessity, is to widen Honeycut Road so we can handset access, move the light up there, relocate the light from the Maricopa-Castagrand Highway intersection up north to Honeycut and, uh, smooth that out quite a bit. So it's been something, uh, planned for quite a while.
And this is all part of the bigger vision of the, you know, what will be someday the 347 overpass, those types of things, correct?
There's a very good chance it will, um, with the different concepts being brought forward, that it will work with that. There's a possibility that, you know, an alignment chosen, that this could end up being a temporary improvement over the long term, but, um, we, we expect that these improvements will be there for several years at a minimum.
Great. Thank you. Council, any questions? Uh, seeing no, can I have a motion, please? The next one.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to approve a motion, uh, 13-01.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, the next one is the ordinance pertaining to the same. Uh, is that correct? Zoning certain property described in zoning case zone, uh, 12-03 for approximately 250 on the resolution? I thought it was only on the ordinance. We needed the roll call. Okay. So let's go back on 10.1 and do a roll call. I apologize. Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the ordinance at 10.2. Back to approximately 251.16 acres, genuinely situated west of Anderson Road, south of Peters and Knoll Road, east of the legal limit of the Ochse and Indian Community along the Maricopa-Castagrand Highway within the city of Maricopa Incorporated Limits. The parcels of land are situated in a portion of Section 15 of Township 5 South, Range 4 East of the Hila and Salt River Base and Meridian. Pinal County, Arizona. Discussion and action. Kazi.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of council. Um, this case is on your agenda for a public hearing, as well as for approval of a zoning classification change from county to municipal zoning classification for approximately 251 acres within the recently annexed area, annexation 11-01, and zoning cases 12-03. Currently, the existing zoning for this particular parcel we annexed is CI-12, which is heavy industrial in the county. The city fortunately has similar zoning. So what we are doing, basically changing the nomenclature from county zoning to city zoning. Uh, this is one of the annexation area also with the legal description, and this is a county map that shows, uh, the current CI-12 zoning in that area. With that, uh, the planning commission recommended approval in the December 10, 2012 meeting. Uh, staff recommends approval of zoning 12-03, along with ordinance 13-01, resolution 13-01, and as recommended by the PNZ. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer your question.
Thank you. Council questions?
Thank you, Senator.
Yes? Councilwoman?
Kazi, was there any opposition by PNZ?
Um, Mayor Price, councilmember Garcia, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so I assume we'll do a roll call on this one as well as it being an ordinance? Uh, we'll go ahead and move to that. I guess I need a motion in a second before moving to roll call. Have a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Seconded.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item 10.3 is another resolution. Uh, I assume we'll be doing a roll call on this one as well, or are we going to move it on the ordinance?
Save it for the ordinance on this one.
Okay. Uh, let's see. City of Maricopa, Arizona, declaring as a public record that a certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Article 5 Home Detention and Continuous Alcohol Monitoring Program of the Maricopa City Code relating to the enactment of a program to allow the court to substitute home detention or continuous alcohol monitoring for a portion of a jail term and amending the Maricopa City Code by inserting Article 5 and Chapter 5 of the city code. Discussion and action, and this item is related to the next ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a, a short presentation giving a little bit of detail of the history and, and what this means for Maricopa. The, um, tonight, the, the council, council is being asked to enact our first home detention and alcohol monitoring program, I call it HT program, um, for the city of Maricopa. Uh, this is, we are allowed to do this based on, on state statute. Um, until the past fall, uh, Maricopa has not enacted this alcohol monitoring program because there is, uh, there is a geographical conundrum with, with Maricopa. The, the law said that, uh, anybody eligible for this program shall be employed within the county in which the city or town is located. With over 70% of our, our workforce driving to Maricopa County, uh, it just was, was futile to try to do a, a, a home detention program because it, it just didn't work because of our, the, this geographical boundary. Um, given comments by the, by Judge Sully and, and myself, we worked, uh, to put together HB 2390 with the support of Representative Frank Pratt, and, and this was our, our home detention bill, uh, which we were, we worked and, and wrote to eliminate this geographical boundary for employment. And, and in working at the Capitol and working with other stakeholders, uh, the, the bill grew to just eliminate the work requirement to have a home detention program. Uh, many people found that, uh, they were, if, if, it just, it benefited a lot of people because there are people who, uh, just weren't able to work, but, but were just ripe for a, a home detention program. So it, it grew, and, uh, and the result is that this bill signed by the governor, um, which now allows us to do what we need to do, which is have a full-blown home detention And a home detention program in a nutshell, um, allows a qualifying defendant, uh, qualifying defendants the opportunity to serve a portion of their jail sentence at home. Uh, and now there's still requirements, and, and it needs to be, it's not a picnic, but it, it gets them into this home detention program. Requirements are, um, uh, and it's only a portion, it's not all the jail terms. Must comply with travel restrictions and, and are mounted with a GPS monitoring system so they can only go certain places at certain times and you record that. Uh, must comply with alcohol testing and monitoring, uh, making sure that, that, uh, you know, they're, uh, not partaking while they're in home detention. Responsible to, to pay all the, the costs incurred for this program, so its user pays, so it's not on the backs of the burden of the citizens of Maricopa. Um, and i- if they, a failure to, uh, perform in the program, uh, to follow the, the requirements, uh, they can, uh, return to jail, uh, for non-compliance. This is a very beneficial program. Uh, it's been successful all across the state. Uh, it allows more sentencing options for the defendant. Uh, they have, you know, he, that person has the ability to, uh, have something more customized to fit their needs or, and, and between, work it out between the, the judge and, and him to, uh, what is available as options. Uh, the defendant can minimize the jail time. Without this, uh, they were required to serve the full time in the jail, although do note that, that by state law, they must serve at least 20% of the jail time. Uh, traditionally, this is, uh, 30, 30 days on, on certain offenses, 45 days on others, and so six to nine days still in, in jail. Um, defendant is able, uh, to work sooner, um, and, and that's a real big plus, the fact that you can, uh, get your, your regular time done, get to home detention, and, and then you can attend work and, and have that security. Uh, better able to maintain employment, that's an obvious one. And then the cost is, we ran the numbers, did some comparisons, about 60% less for the defendant, uh, in this program, from, from 2,000 to 3,000 down to, to, you know, right around 1,000, 1,400. So it benefits the defendants, uh, greatly. It's, it's a good deal for them, and it's a good deal for Maricopa. Again, the, let's see. The more, um, Maricopa is now allowed to bring this program, um, to all residents. If we had done this prior to this bill, uh, we would, we would be very few people who would qualify for it. So, so the passage of this program allows everyone to have this option that all around the state others do. We will now have this program, it's, it's equity issue. Um, allows the judge flexibility to avoid, uh, disproportional sentencing consequences. Um, you know, that at some point before, before this judge is required to do certain things and certain sentencings, this allows him options, uh, that work best for the goal, which is with, is to bring justice and to, and allow people to, uh, you know, make amends. Maricopa benefits if defendant can maintain employment. That's an obvious one. If, it's, everybody's better off if, if people can, can keep their employment and, and not have be that unintended consequences of, of unemployment. And, uh, Maricopa benefits by lowering program costs and the shifting of financial responsibilities to the monitoring vendors. The jail time is ultimately the responsibility of the defendant. But many times, all the time, the city pays it upfront, and then we need to be reimbursed. That doesn't always happen. With this, the monitoring program is the responsible party. If, if there's a breakdown in, in the costs, it's the monitoring, monitoring program, uh, the vendor that is on the, is, is responsible for, for collecting the money. And so it, it does benefit the city both overall and, and through this nuance. And let's see here. And just, and I have any questions? And we have Judge Sully here. Uh, if there's any, uh, specific questions or, or questions for council?
Council questions? Councilman Potter?
Paul, how much does the, you said the, the defendant occurs the cost for the monitoring system? How much does the cost?
The, um, and I do have that here. This is some estimates that, that we got. Primarily, this program is in conjunction with, with DUI enforcement. And, and most, uh, extreme DUI, there's a 30-day jail sentence, uh, super extreme, a 45-day jail sentence, um, uh, with installation, uh, 36-day, uh, for, for extreme DUI, 30-day sentence. So installation, 24 days of monitoring, and then still the required six days of, of jail time. And, and monitoring's $10 a day, jail time, I think, $72 a day. Uh, we're talking for extreme DUI with this program, it is $919. Normally, just with jail time, it would be $2,296. So, so a significant savings for, for regular, for, uh, extreme. The program with the monitoring, the defendant will pay, uh, $1,155. Normally, that person would have to pay for, for 45 days in jail, uh, $3,380, uh, $3,383. So significant savings, less, more than half is saved, so.
That's your question.
Yeah.
Bill, Councilman, can I see the, the, uh, councilman with chapters?
Are there any added burdens to the PD?
I'm sorry?
Added burdens? I mean, do, are you exhausting our resources for the police department to do anything? I know the monitoring, you mentioned monitoring.
Oh, oh, no, no.
Their vendors, but does that, you know, let's say there's non-compliance, is that, do they call?
No, I, I think it's handled, uh, would you like me to ask the judge to respond that? I, I do not believe that, that the, the police get involved with enforcement after, yeah. So it's, it's a monitoring company and the, and the courts need to make compliance and, and I imagine the judge gives an order and, and that person may, they may have to pick the person up if, uh, if there's a warrant or something, but, but it, it doesn't seem a burden on our police.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Chappados?
Paul, I just have a question about the monitoring. Does that include the, the testing as well as any of the devices?
The, um, it, it's a, both a, a GPS monitoring and an alcohol, there, there is a, a combination. I'm going to call the judge on this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, basically, it's a GPS monitoring system that makes the, sure the person is supposed to be where he is, but also there's a, a sort of portable breathalyzer, not sort of, it is a portable breathalyzer. The people blow into it, they actually take a picture of the person to make sure it is the person who's been sentenced, and that's the person blowing in the, into the monitoring system. It's actually, uh, I think, quite reasonable. I think it's $10 a day if you just have the alcohol monitoring and $12 if you have both.
Um, just for a point of clarification for the audience more than anything, it, it seems to make sense to me, um, but at the, at the same time, this, just for clarification, this is not a specific home where everybody goes to that's going to burden one neighborhood. It is their homes that they're just being monitored. Correct?
Right. The, the vendor we're using now actually delivers the equipment and monitors it, and I just got a, a non-compliance memorandum from the monitoring company that showed the gentleman blowing into the portable device and, uh, reading way above what he should have in the system. So it's, uh, for the benefit of the, of the person, it lets him, uh, more able to pay his fines. And again, I think the important thing is transferring the, the cost of, uh, the, uh, jail to the, uh, to the home detention vendor. Uh, the city has charged $197, I believe, for the first day in jail by the county and $7,250 for every day afterward. So that's a cost we hopefully, hopefully will transfer to the vendor, so.
I see. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Uh, seeing none, I accept the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 13-02.
Second. Motion is second. I believe this is the resolution 10.3 at the moment, so we don't need, we don't need a roll call, we'll just go ahead and, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, this is the ordinance relating to it, so just reading it out, the ordinance of the mayor and city council, the city of Maricopa Arizona adopting Article 5 Home Detention and Continuous Alcohol Monitoring Program by reference as Article 5 of Chapter 5 of the Maricopa City Code and Providing for Severability and an Effective Date thereof discussed in action. Again, item related to Resolution 13.02. Don't think there's anything additional we need there. Any other questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second so we can move to roll call?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Aye.
Yes. Thank you very much. Item 10.5, going to discuss and possibly take action on approving a budgetary transfer totaling $5 million to General Governmental CIP, Capital Project City Manager, City Services Complex, from various CIP funds for projects for completion of the City Services Complex project. This is for discussion and action. Tom?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you a budget transfer. I also have CIP Project Manager Brad Hinton in case there's any project-specific questions. Very short PowerPoint presentation on this. As council's aware, the city complex project was scheduled to be completed halfway or midway through fiscal 1314. Through effective project management, city staff, Abacus project management, that completion date is now scheduled for September 1st, several months ahead of schedule, at a cost of $21.1 million. This, ahead of schedule, kind of threw us in a little bit of a unique situation. We had programmed in our CIP to budget about $4.5 million in fiscal 1314. Basically, what would happen, if we did nothing, we would have to stop construction, once we ran out of fiscal 1213 funding, wait for the new budget cycle to kick in, then finish the project, thus delaying the project. So the action tonight basically just speeds up or moves the budget program for fiscal 14, excuse me, 1314 into this current fiscal year. And if I may, I'm going to jump ahead to a page out of our budget book. In the bottom, I apologize for the small print, in the bottom, you see the city complex project. What this action tonight is basically doing is taking that $4.45 million scheduled to be budgeted in 1314 and moving that to 1213. That's really all it was, it's program to do. We anticipated using the same funding source, cash financing the project. It basically just allows us the ability to speed up the project.
Mayor? Yes?
I have a question. Four and a half million dollars to spend to move from one fiscal year to this fiscal year, but what's the other half million?
Great. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, the $550,000 is additional costs that have been identified through the process. On this slide, you'll see, we took a comprehensive look at the security of this building within the last months with the tragic events back in Connecticut. It forced us to take a step back and work with the police department, say, is this facility adequately secured? What we did is, is we decided it would be to our best advantage to upgrade the card access in the building and install security cameras in the building. And I believe that's about it as far as security enhancements. The card access basically allows us the ability to centrally control who has access in and out of the building, plus any security advances we do in the future, such as scan, if we ever get to retinal scanning. We already have the infrastructure in place. That's what this additional funding will allow us to do. Back in, when we set the budget approximately a year ago at $4.45 million, a lot of these costs were simply estimates. Based on the pricing that we have for furniture, additional signage, and maintaining our IT infrastructure, that makes up the rest of the $550,000. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. And like I say, if there's any project-specific questions, CIP Project Manager Brad Hinton will be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions regarding the acceleration of this budgetary transfer? Nope, guess not. Thank you. Appreciate it. Seeing that there's no additional questions, can I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, a motion, we approve agenda item 10.5. Let's get her moving.
Sounds good. A motion and a second, please.
Second.
Motion, it has been motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 10.6, we're going to discuss and possibly take action to award, in part of a cooperative contract, the office furniture package for the new city hall to Knoll, Inc., and that's an amount not to exceed $619,407.96. Brad, I know you'll explain this to us as we move through these several different contracts.
Mr. Mayor, council members, yes, if I may, I would like to touch on all four items. The next four items are all purchases for various furniture packages for the city complex project. The first, the first item, 10.6, is for the bulk of the furniture for the city complex project, and that's with Knoll. I do have representatives here from Knoll that are here to support the item, and I want to thank them for their help through this process. I also want to thank, because I can't take the credit for this, this is quite the process that I'm experiencing in picking furniture for facilities. And thanks to Patty LaCombe, all her work, and Rick Carr with Abacus, they've done most of the work on this. And these next few months will be fun, you know, getting furniture put in and making the move. So, you know, it's been a process to where we've kind of gotten to step back and let the contractors do their thing these last few months, and it's getting ready to get interesting again, so it'll be fun. But the first one is with Knoll, and that is for the office and open office workstations, mainly. The next one is with Hayworth, which is the seating package. And then you have one with Facilitech, which is a, it's kind of miscellaneous furniture. Most of it is lobby furniture and then other areas for various benches and such, some racking and different things like that. And then the last one is Interior Solutions, which is the specialty equipment. That's high-density storage and then also some of the specialty equipment in the police building. And so each one of these items, we are asking for a 10% contingency, which is included in this not-to-exceed amount, which is beyond, you know, the contract amounts with each vendor. And that's just to cover us for any unforeseen's. You know, we have, on one in particular that I can give an example of is Interior Solutions. These last couple of weeks, we've been meeting with various departments to work certain storage needs out. And one item that we've already identified is lockable, high-density storage that we're going to need to further think about and incorporate in here, so that type of thing would cover something like that. With that, I think that's all I had. I'll answer any questions.
You said that was in the not-to-exceed amount, it's already in there, Bill?
Yep.
Correct, okay.
Correct.
Okay, well, let's just move through these, do we?
Do you need separate motions?
Yeah, we'll need to do, because they're all individual items, so I guess we can ask if there's any questions pertaining to each one of them in bulk now, and we can identify that, and then we can come back and approve each one. Are there any questions regarding these? Nope? Okay, well then, let's start doing the motions here. A motion to approve on 10.6. Motion, have a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, a motion on 10.7. Have a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion on 10.8.
Move to approve.
So moved and a second.
Aye.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. 10.9.
Second.
Motion and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 10.10, to discuss and possibly create a task force committee to provide vision and guidance for the city of Maricopa zoning code rewrite project and to advise the planning commission and city council on these matters until the adoption of the new zoning code. This is for discussion and action, and Dana, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Price. Councilmembers, this is your opportunity to form a task force, create a task force committee to aid in the steering, guidance, and visioning of the zoning code rewrite process, project, as you mentioned. If you could recall, back on December 18th, Mr. Michael Dyatt, consultant, in his presentation, kickoff presentation to the council and the community, identified the, that a task force steering committee is very important to helping the project and, you know, pursuing the wants and needs of the council as well as the planning commission, and then providing those recommendations on pertinent items. So, that said, if the council wishes to consider that item, staff will bring back, given it's a favorable agreement or understanding amongst the council members, I'll bring back this item for appointment. Thank you very much.
So again, the item before this is whether or not to create a task force committee, just like in most mayor task forces, it usually includes myself and two other council members. Should the council decide to move forward with this, I have asked if Councilmember Potter and Councilmember Chappados would accompany me on this task force and go from there. So, any discussion on this? Any thoughts? Questions? No? Okay. With that, I would go ahead and ask for a motion to approve then.
So moved.
A motion, have a second, please.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dana. Item 10.11, the Maricopa City Councils should discuss and possibly take action on a request to approve the city of Maricopa's 2013 state legislative agenda. That's for discussion and action, and Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and just a reminder that this is state-only this year, we usually do state, federal together, but we're doing state early because things are percolating up pretty soon, pretty early in the session here. So, the goal here is to adopt a legislative agenda that allows the city of Maricopa staff to effectively focus on our legislative efforts on council priorities. And so I just want to review these priorities that are extremely similar to what we passed traditionally, but they cover the areas that are important. They're not bill-specific, but they're the concepts that we constantly reinforce. And you're very familiar with these. Always to protect our revenue sources, sometimes in there, while there was a money crunch, now there's a little bit of a surplus, but still, we need to be diligent to make sure that we are allowed to do the collection that we need to do. Oppose cost shifting on the cities and towns, those unfunded mandates, and haven't seen anything yet, but that's something we always want to make sure that they're not asking us to do something but not offering the resources for us to do those with. Protect local control. That's traditionally, the past couple of years, been a very big one. You know, the government closest people best knows what the people, you know, need and desire, and that's something we reinforce the state legislature all the time, that city councils and town councils know what their cities want and need and how best to offer them those services. Adopt positive structural reforms. Any chance we get to just clean up, make things simpler, make things easier, make things flow smoother, you know, those are things we're always looking to support, things that make everyone's life easier. And then create economic development tools. Any chance we have that we can get assistance from the state to do what we need to do, which is bring jobs to Maricopa. The state has kind of been lagging in supplying the toolboxes, the tools that we need, and so there are a couple of things on the horizon, and we'll be always watching for those and push those economic development tools so that our team can use those and bring jobs to Maricopa. And then do no harm. Sometimes there's things out there that, you know, you just, you see it, and it's like, this is going to hurt us. We need to battle this, we need to try to figure out what are they trying to accomplish, let them know what it does to us and what does the cities, and say, you know, this has unintended consequences, this is going to, just to inform them, what you, you know, you're doing this, this is what's going to happen, and just make sure that our voices are heard. So that is the proposed legislative agenda that if approved tonight will be my core marching orders, our staff's core marching orders, and when we go to speak representing Maricopa to the state legislature. Just a little talk on implementation. We will advocate in support of the agenda at all levels, from the state and county governments to the local entities. Coordinate activities with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. They are, to a point, help drive the statewide strategies, although still, we go out there, we represent Maricopa and make sure that things are good for Maricopa. Many times, there's overlap and it's, you know, the city is, it's one for all and all for one with us. Communicate with council on issues affecting Maricopa. We have many ways to communicate with you. Already had a little blast I sent out, we'll have updates on daily, on a weekly cycle, and then when need to, we'll get ahold of council, make sure that you hear it from us on those things that are going bad, and you know what, you're currently updated. Enlist assistance of individual members of council to initiate targeted strategies when warranted. There are sometimes the relationships that council have that are beneficial to the city and to getting our voice across, so I will enlist you to call upon you to help with those relationships to benefit the city. And seek additional council direction as needed when it's time. I mean, there's times when we're going to have to come back and say, a work session item, and we need to get direction to make sure. So we, at all points where we keep you in the loop, staff does and make sure that this is the council's legislative policy. Expectations on bills. This is a little preview. Session just started this Monday, not much going on this week after the governor's State of the State address, but we have hints in the wind of things coming. So we will monitor the battles. There's a budget surplus, sometimes they say those battles can be even worse than the budget, you know, shortfalls. Their volume for money, the governor came out with a request to increase funding for Health and Human Services, and that was kind of caught everybody off guard, so everybody else is shifting off of that, we'll watch that. Gun safety has been in the news, and so that's a hot issue, and so we'll see how that affects us. I don't know what's coming down, you know, our legislature has their opinions on gun legislation, we'll see how the national events, you know, how they impact, what they're intending to do and see what they intend to do now. We have two Maricopa-related annexation bills. From the last annexation, there are a couple of cleanup bills that are being pushed by both the city and the county. One will handle the pinch point to eliminate that flaw and, or that unintended consequence of a piece of land that at one point gets so narrow that it makes it unannexatable. And then another one with right-ofways. When we annexed half of Anderson Road, the other half remains in the county, so the county is helping us with the bill that allows to transfer, not annex, the second half of that roadway. So we have the western 33-foot of Anderson Road is in the city, and with passage of a bill the county is pushing, we'll be allowed to transfer the control of the right half, the eastern half of Anderson Road, and then we will have full control of Anderson Road when it goes fee-to-trust as per the auction agreement. So there are two bills in there that will help in that area, and we will support those bills, we will advocate for those. A bill promoting transparency of the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, there's a, one of the first bills dropped is one requiring the League of Cities to have more transparency, post their agendas and post their minutes and actual documents that they present. It's funny, it's another bill, they also want to take ASRS away from the League. It just shows a little bit of, it's an odd bill, but it tends to show that they're, I think the League is being effective because they're taking notice and they're, the legislature is running bills that affect the League, I think because of the effectiveness of the League. So a little sign there. And then the governor's push for tax simplification bill. This one is our main focus right now. This one's big. Let me go into some detail. And so this is, this one, it's a, it's a unique, not unique story, but the, this summer, the governor put together a tax simplification task force. Many, many, sorry, many hearings, League of Cities was there, many people were in that. They put out a report, and that report is more than likely going to turn into a bill that has a number of ways of changing the way TPT, transaction privilege taxes are collected. There are some things in there that directly affect the city. The proposals and the likely bill that will follow from the proposals, the standardization of rates and a new online collection portal, so that a builder can go and whether you're building in Gilbert or Maricopa or Avondale, that everything's pretty much standardized, you don't have to recalculate every time you go somewhere. An online portal where they can go and do their, compute and pay their sales tax directly online rather than having to come down to the cities, and the city of Maricopa supports these. There's a restriction on third-party audits that we have concerns about because the audits done would be done by the Department of Revenue, and they're not always the most diligent in digging up every last penny. I think the, Tom can, can- I think Tom can talk about at least $75,000 to $100,000 that he's found just in one year. But that, we would not be able to go in and double-check their work, and so there'd be a loss there. But none of that matters in some of these things if the third bullet takes effect, and that is the, there is a request or in the proposal, one of the proposals was to transfer the collection of construction sales tax from the point of construction in City of Maricopa, when they build a house, to the point of purchase. So, wherever the builder who's building in Maricopa buys his lumber wholesale or whatever, that's where they pay the sales tax. That construction tax would be paid in sales tax, not in the City of Maricopa. So, let me go into more detail in the next slide, but the stated purpose of this whole tax simplification bill is to simplify tax payments for home builders and contractors. That's what they've always been talking about, but it has some repercussions that hurt us and benefit builders, and that's just the way those, and that is what we're taking issue with and being heard on. In this bill, proposed bill, that hasn't hit yet, we haven't seen any language yet, but it'll probably be the language of the task force. Builders with this new sales tax would pay 41% rather than the current 65% they pay now. So, it would be a reduction in costs to the builders, and just, it would just reduce their burden to pay for growth. Builders would pay taxes to Phoenix, Tucson, or Flagstaff on homes built in Maricopa. I don't know exactly where those big lumber yards that they buy this lumber at, but I know they're not in Maricopa, and so we will not see a penny of that. And so, it's not that they're, it's just the state isn't getting any more money, it's just they're switching where, who collects that money. We have the burden of building these homes, of providing services to these homes, of making sure that the quality of life, our efforts in the city government to make a high-quality life drive builders to come build here. And so, we need those tax dollars, those sales tax collections, to help fund what we do to make life so nice here. And they're going to take that and just, you know, with the swipe of a bill, just pass it off to cities that have no skin, have no measurement here in Maricopa at all. We have the burden of making sure that the homes are built right, but they'll reap the Talking with Tom, we're looking at a loss of $1.5 million in sales tax to Maricopa. That's what we collected last year. That's what we're likely to lose, and these are in our slow years. As we get going and building spurs up, we're going to have so much more going on, and that will be lost devastating, simply devastating to the city manager's efforts to do what she is trying to do for the city and for our budgets. This would just, would hurt. The hit, we would lose 21% of our sales tax revenues. We'd basically 5% of our general revenues overall. Revenues that are collected and put into the general fund, 5% of those would be gone with this pass. It violates the concepts of requiring growth to pay for itself. These homes are built here, they require services, they have a burden on us. We should be able to collect that construction tax to provide that. It is our choice to, you know, we're the ones that should have that money so we can use it as best we see. We should have the right to collect a construction sales tax because we build. And then, the equity between taxpayers. The equity also in the auditing, because if it's, there's a fairness issue, if one person's allowed to get away with not paying through a FOPA of the state, and another person has to pay, it breaks down the system that some people are getting away with and some people aren't. So, this bill has direct repercussions in Maricopa that are not good, and so we have gotten out early. Everybody said that they're surprised how quickly the cities have rallied and gotten to this. Our goal is to let everybody know so when, before they drop that bill, they know what they're facing if this stays, and then we will just advocate, advocate, advocate on behalf of what's good for Maricopa.
Vice Mayor.
The proposed bill is so egregious that even Mayor Jim Langus Scottsdale is irate.
Yes, and that's saying a lot, because he doesn't usually get irate at government. Well, he doesn't, what the legislature does, he's usually pro this current legislature.
Vice Mayor.
Paul, if none of this affects the state coffers funding, what is their justification for transferring this state?
And the justification is that when you collect sales tax from a, or construction sales tax at a city level, you, the old way, you had to go ahead and figure out what the rates were and how it was computed. The 65% is actually 65% of the cost of the home, so you had to do a little math there and figure out how are you going to charge this? The differences in all the cities was one of the reasons they cited for this transfer, and also the lack of being able to collect for small construction companies who buy at Home Depot and don't get the construction sales tax. So, based on those small issues, they said, well, we're just going to make it at the point of purchase of the material. But it's a double fix. If the goal is to simplify tax collection, the online portal and the standardization of the tax, of the construction sales tax code fixes that problem. So, you don't need this fix. You already have the centralized collection to fix the problem. But somehow, this fix may end up in the bill also. I call it the double construction sales tax fix, but, you know, you see that there's a change in the rate, and I suspect that that's something that many people are happy with.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm completed, yes. Oh, I'm, oh, just have one more slide.
Yeah. Please. We just stopped. You were doing so good.
I forgot, I forgot I had my conclusion.
I know, I know.
I should have just ended right there. Just my conclusion, adopting legislative agenda allows the City of Maricopa staff to effectively focus on legislative efforts, on council priorities. So, any additional questions, Paul?
I would just say that, you know, council members, if you get the opportunity, you know, certainly, you probably wanted to further discuss this with Paul, but I've had several discussions with him on it, and I've already had the opportunity to meet with our representative who is in our district, but he is from, he lives in Old Valley. His name's Adam Quasman. I talked with him specifically. He's an economist, and so it's really an interesting discussion. You know, he and I speak the same language, but we were able to talk specifically on this and, you know, how badly it would hurt the City of Maricopa, and so, something I would encourage you to coordinate with Paul and to follow up with, that they need to hear from us. Also, audience members at home, you know, this is something really, really important. If that double fix, as Paul puts it, gets in the bill, you know, that's a huge 5% to our general fund losses. One and a half million dollars, we can start, you know, picking who's going to lose it. Is it police, is it fire, is it, you know, whoever it is. It's going to hurt, and it's not fair. So, you know, we just need to make sure that this gets done properly. I know that I have meetings coming up with some of our other, you know, local representatives, our other representative, Steve Smith, as well as Al Melvin, who's our senator. So, something I would encourage the council to follow up on, and also the citizens.
And Mr. Mayor, just to let council and the public know, I have had meetings directly with both Representative Smith and Representative Quasman on this issue, and they both have given me time to explain our stance, even though it's not even a bill yet. They're listening, they're concerned, you know, they want to know more, but all signs are very positive from them that they understand the gravity of this, and that's important. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Anything else? Okay. With that, entertain a motion for this item. A motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul. And then, finally, 10.12. Mayor and City Council discuss and possibly take action to adopt the 2013 through 2016 strategic plan for discussion and action. Danielle, floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, hopefully, this is wrapping it up with a fun one tonight. This is the result of a lot of hard work by the council and staff as well, and the facilitator that we had come out to work with us back in October, which feels like a lifetime ago after the holidays. So, I will run through this and give you a quick overview. What the council has a copy of is just a small run of an example of our strategic plan as the draft sits today, and I've got a copy with me. And just a little bit of a background on the creation of this 2013 to 2016 strategic plan. We held the retreat, the last update retreat, with the mayor and council facilitator and staff and leadership on the city staff side on October 25th. Worked in November and December to then take all of the input and the comments that council made during that retreat and update and redesign this plan document. It's now before council to be adopted, and the action items reported, I think you also remember maybe a really, really big, long spreadsheet that talks about all the different tasks that then relate back to this plan. Help us in achieving council goals. It gives staff assignments, due dates, status, all those things. That is going to be following council, should council adopt this plan tonight. Then, we would diligently get that back together, revise that, because some of those things, many of the things on that previous task list have been accomplished, which we're very proud of, and we're going to have new things and tweaks and changes. We'd be back before you in March with that, as well as a report as to where we are and what we've gotten done. Next slide, really quick, just to remind everyone, the good news is it's not any massive changes because our priorities have remained the same. As a result of that discussion, our top priorities are still economic sustainability, quality of life, transportation, public safety, and quality municipal services. And for those out there, especially in the audience and all of our residents, the document elements, if you look at the document, which is, has been available on the website and would be available on the website immediately after adoption, there, each priority area has information, talks about the vision, the council's vision for that priority area. It talks about the accomplishments, what's been done by the city and by staff in the past year to advance that vision. And it talks about the objectives and activities that we're going to get done, or plan to get done in this current fiscal year, and then mid-range and long-range goals to getting those done. So, and there's also some fun elements like city at a glance, contact phone numbers. It's a nice reference document for the organization. And then, so in conclusion, it's a focused and aggressive plan, again, rather than going through all the elements in here, everyone has the ability to read it and look through it. It's a roadmap for the future. This is also a very important guiding document for the creation of the budget. It's also an important guiding document for staff performance measurements. Everything that we do in all the activities and processes and projects that we're working on, everything we do, we think about, how does this tie back to the council's strategic plan? Does this follow the guidance that they've given us? And if it doesn't, we really question whether it's something we should be doing, and then we will come ask you. And so, one of the other things that I'd like to point out that we got feedback on that I think is great is, in the strategic plan retreat, council said, there's a lot of words in here. There's a lot of tasks, and there's a lot of things listed that are really standard operating procedure. So, one of the big changes you'll see is we took out comments and bullet points that were simply how we do business now in Maricopa, and added a lot of imagery. So, took out all of that text-heavy stuff, and then just made it a really more visually appealing document that hopefully gives people out there an idea of what we're all about. So, with that, it is, again, will be following adoption, available in print for anybody that wants to pick it up, available on the city website. And with that, any questions?
Any questions, council?
I don't have a question. I just couldn't come. Chief, this is a great photo of our smiling firefighters, if you haven't seen it.
Surprise. Mr. Mayor and council, I would actually like, I would like to add as well, earlier, you asked about the local design, and Ruben Garcia, he didn't design that, but he did design this completely from scratch and in-house. He did that last year, and then he updated it again this year with city manager Fisher's direction, and I think beautiful job and a testimonial of the great talent we have on board.
Very good, very good.
Thank you. Yeah, this is great. I love it when people say, well, where's the city going? And I love to ask them, have you read this? And, no, I don't even know it exists. So, you can drop by City Hall, pick it up, take a brief read. You can get it even before you go to bed. It's not that long, it might be, and I promise, yeah, it won't put you to sleep too fast, but it really is helpful as to where the city's going, and it's very eye-opening. So, with that, accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes our session today. Thank you very much for attending, and with that, can I have a motion to move to E-session, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and we'll see you next time.